We can call this meeting to order. This is our City of Palacca Commission, September 8th, 2016 meeting. If everyone could, please turn their phones to silent.
My phone's off, dude. My iPad's talking.
And I, Pat. We're gonna have Reverend Carl N. Flag, Senior Pastor of Mount Tabor First Baptist Church, County Commissioner, to come forward and lead us in the indication in a moment of silence.
Good evening to all of our officials and to all of our citizens. Let us start with a moment of silence that we can recognize and commemorate those victims as well as those first responders who participated in the September 11 terrorist attacks 15 years Heavenly Father, we humbly approach your throne of grace and mercy, and dear Lord, we come on behalf of this city commission and the administration of our city. We ask you, dear Lord, to look upon our entire community, our nation, and our world. Look on both leaders and citizens alike. Look on those who are charged with administration as well as policymakers. Help us to work together. Help us to seek consensus and collaboration for the efforts that are necessary to enhance the quality of living for all of our citizens. Lead us and guide us and direct us. Help us to understand that yesterday's tragedy can lead to today's triumph. Bless us, dear God, as you know our economic situation. You know our environmental situations. But God, if we would all bring the best thoughts and ideas and deliberations together, we will recognize that although our needs are great, you are greater. Give us understanding, Lord. Give us peace of mind. And as this commission tonight consider resolutions and ordinances and listen to the wishes of our citizens as well as those needs. We pray in a very special way that you will reignite us, reunite us. We focus our mind and our thoughts and redirect our actions so that we represent a community of love. Bless us and keep us now. We will forever give you praise and glory and honor. Let's do your name alone. In Christ's name I pray. Amen. Let us salute our great nation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mayor Hill.
Here.
Vice Mayor Brown.
President.
Commissioner Borum.
President.
Commissioner Campbell.
President.
Commissioner Mulvane.
President.
All members are present.
Thank you. Does everyone have an opportunity to look at the minutes from our July 28 budget workshop and our meeting also on the same date?
Motion to approve.
Mr. Motion in a second on the floor. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item one in the agenda, which is our public recognition. First item that we have is a proclamation for Constitution Week, September 17 through 23rd. Will Ms. Nancy Preston, Donna Rojero, and members of the William Bartram Chapter of the National Society of the Daughters of the American Revolution, please come forward. We've got a proclamation that reads as follows. Whereas in May of 1787, delegates gathered in the Pennsylvania State House to chart a new course of our emerging country, meeting in a time of economic hardship and passionate debate, but with the understanding that while controversy is a hallmark of democracy, the forces of tension and uncertainty pale in comparison to the strength of our common ideals. And whereas in this document that was endured for more than two and a quarter centuries, the framers put forth their vision for a more perfect union and called it the Constitution of the United States of America. And whereas our constitution was signed on September 17, 1787, after an extended period of national conversation with the promise of the Bill of Rights that became the supreme law of the land, since that time, America's constitution has inspired nations to demand control of their own destinies and has called multitudes to seek freedom and prosperity on our shores. And whereas we celebrate the world's longest surviving written charter of government, let us remember that upholding our founding principles requires us to challenge modern injustices while accepting our responsibilities as citizens, our obligations to one another and to the future generations, allowing us to move forward, knowing that in the face of impossible odds, those who love their country can change it. And whereas Constitution Week designated by the Joint Resolution of the Congress as September 17 through 23 each year was initiated by the Daughters of the American Revolution in 1955 and signed into law in 1956 by President Dwight Eisenhower, becoming public law number 915 of the United States. Now therefore, I, Terrell Hill, Mayor of the City of Palacca, together with the members of the Palacca City Commission, hereby recognizing proclaim September 17 through 23 as Constitution Week in the City of Palacca, and we encourage local government officials and leaders of civic, social, and educational organizations to conduct ceremonies and programs that will bring together community members to reflect on the importance of active citizenship, recognize the enduring strength of our constitution, and reaffirm our commitment to the rights and obligations of the citizenship in this great nation. In witness whereof, I have here and to set my hand and cause to be affixed to seal the City of Palacca, Florida on this eighth day of September, the year of our Lord 2016. Commissioners Mary Lawson Brown, Justin Campbell, Rufus Borum, James Hewitt Jr., Terrell Hill, Mayor.
Thank you.
Just make sure the mayor's not hurt.
All right, all three. One, two, three. One, two, three. Thank you. I'm gonna make sure that... I'm gonna make sure that we commend the Daughters of the American Revolution for the job that they do in this community and the support that they've had over the years with our young people. Back in 1990, I was a scholarship recipient for DAR, and it was definitely a great help for me going into college. And again, we just thank you guys for all the work that you do. Next up is our K-9 Officer Retirement Resolution, 2016-1251, recognizing the retirement of K-9 Wilson from police service and providing for his adoption by Detective Hager. So Chief Shaw.
Will.
Hey, baby.
Wilson, I will shake your hand, but I'm gonna let you go.
Wilson, I'll shake your hand. I'm a dog person.
Yes, sir.
The Resolution of the City of Palacca, recognizing the retirement of K-9 Wilson, declaring K-9 Wilson a surplus and authorizing his adoption by transferring ownership of K-9 Wilson to Detective David Hager, his handler.
Tonight is a very special moment for us. This is K-9 Wilson and Detective Hager has served the police department in a great way. He's had many cases, countless of cases where I can say that they've done a great job on it. We've gotten commendations from the community to go out for their work and their efforts. I've worked with Davey in a number of different cases, a number of different ways, and being able to see this portion come with K-9 Wilson being retired and him being able to take him home and continue out being his partner, it was gratifying, something that we are very happy to be able to have. So we take this time to be able to honor the both of them for their service together and for Wilson for his service to the department and to the city.
I'd like to thank the city for giving me this opportunity, one. Being a K-9 handler, when you bring one of these dogs home, you just, you don't realize the bond that you get. And when I was given this opportunity, I thought, man, what better way to end his K-9 career than to bring him home? And I know three little girls over there would've had my behind if I didn't bring him home. But I want to thank the city for giving me the opportunity to take him home. Thank you.
Can your daughters come up, cuz?
Sir. Daughter can watch him get paws.
That's their dog, too. We didn't mean to leave your wife out, did we?
Probably.
Back in that picture. 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 Back in that picture.
...two thousand sixteen from five AM until four PM. Florida Bass Federation, Joe Nickel, applicant. M. Grant permission to exceed allowable noise levels for special permiti- special events permit number sixteen dash thirty-nine, eighth annual Veterans Appreciation Bass Tournament on Saturday, September twenty-fourth, two thousand sixteen, Joe's Nickel, applicant. In authorized closure of certain streets to vehicles or traffic for special events permit number sixteen dash forty. Florida's healthiest weight, five K walk-run, nine twenty-four sixteen, from seven AM to eleven AM. Florida Department of Health, Putnam County, Marsha- Mary Garcia, applicant. I won't be there. Um, is there, is there anything on the consent agenda that needs to be removed? There's a motion on the floor and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item number four of the agenda. Which has been, which has been pulled, moving to item five, public hearing. First public hearing, item five is pu- first public hearing, trim calendar fiscal year twenty sixteen seventeen, proposed budget and millet rate for twenty sixteen seventeen, six point four mils proposed. Item A is a resolution set to propose fiscal year twenty sixteen seventeen millet rate to six point four proposed. And item B is adopting resolution proposed fiscal year twenty sixteen seventeen budget, item A.
Matt Reynolds, Finance Director, um, there's a, flip that over, Mayor, there's a truth and millet statement that should be read.
Prior to the adoption of the resolutions which set the property tax millet rate, chapter two hundred point zero six five, per N four, per N D, Florida statute requires the following statements to be publicly announced. The taxing authority levying this property tax is the City Commission of the City of Palaca. The rollback rate is six point eight zero zero nine mils per one thousand dollars of assessed value. The percentage decrease is five point eight nine percent below the rollback millet rate. The operating millet rate is to be levied is six point four zero 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 mils per one thousand dollars of assessed value.
Okay, Commissioner, Mayor, um, I put together a, a short presentation to go over any of the changes that we've made since our last budget workshop, which was July twenty-eighth, as well as some changes we made last Thursday night with the CRA budget workshop. Not a whole lot of changes, so I'll just kind of go through it real quickly. Citywide assumptions, uh, nothing here has really changed except for the bottom. The, uh, the, the large change that we had was our, our property and casualty insurance, which is our Florida Municipal Insurance Trust. It covers property, automobiles, uh, general liability and workers' comp. We got the renewal information on that and it went up by forty-three thousand dollars this year, which was about ten percent, um, mainly due to workers' comp. So that played a part in kind of, uh, all of the funds, uh, splitting that cost. And so the funds were a little bit different from the budget, uh, workshop we had on July twenty-eighth, but I'll kind of go over them. Airport fund, the administrative expense reimbursement for the general fund was automatically adjusted upwards. Uh, some of the grant figures for the obstruction removal, uh, went up, so the administrative cost, uh, expense reimbursement went up. This table kind of shows, uh, the difference, not, not, uh, not a whole lot of difference from the first budget workshop, still having to transfer, uh, about, estimated about, uh, two hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars to the airport next year. It does show a grant share of twenty-one six eighty. That's just per the grant agreements that we have in place. However, uh, we do know that we anticipate to receive, I believe, some more grant revenue, and so hopefully that share will be much lower and, and we anticipate it to actually be a zero share, but per the agreements that we have in place at the moment, the share is technically twenty-one six eighty. I think we've got something that we have to execute with the FAA and return to them next week.
As soon as we receive the grant application. As soon as we receive the grant application that was approved for the obstruction removal. It was approved, I got an email, uh, yesterday that it approved, that'd be fed accident to the city. I gotta have it back to them.
We have to.
One day next week, the fifteenth.
And so that, that will of course change that share, but at this moment in time, that's what it is. And once we get all of those things in place, we'll of course amend the budget, you know, once we get into next fiscal year to, to correct that. So, a two thirty-one should, should be, you know, a little bit lower. Should be, you know, roughly what we had to transfer estimated this year, about two oh seven, so. Utility fund, uh, changes from the, uh, last budget workshop. Uh, we restored funding for an administrative assistant position. We had somebody retire. Um, I had originally taken the funding for that position out. We've since added that, uh, funding back in, um, and our position is filled at the moment, so, uh, and also, uh, my mistake, had a mistake in my formula that I found when I was going through and double checking stuff. Unfortunately, it resulted in an additional twenty-five thousand in expenditure, so it kind of caused the net, uh, revenues of the fund to drop a little bit. I believe the last, uh, budget workshop, that number was about a hundred and thirty thousand we were gonna put into reserves, and, um, so it's down, it's down quite a bit. Insurance, adding that position back, and then my mistake in the formula. Yes, it says fifty-four thousand, so we're putting about fifty thousand in. Uh, reserves still estimated to be about seven hundred thousand at the end of next year, which is about fourteen point three five percent of the operating expenses, getting close to the recommended minimum of sixteen point six seven, which is two months of operating. So, I mean, it's, it's much better than, than what that fund used to be, and so as you can see, it's trending upwards. Uh, what we originally budgeted for the reserves to be at ten and a half percent, uh, we ended this year much, much better than, uh, than we originally pan- planned, so that's good. Golf fund, really haven't made any changes. We're gonna be talking about golf course training a little bit, so, um. Projected this year, nothing really changed from the first, uh, first budget workshop. Figures are still the same, so, uh, nothing different to really talk about there. Sanitation fund, again, did not make any changes at all in sanitation fund. As you can see here, we're still estimating, even with the six point five percent increase in sanitation rates, uh, sanitation will still be in the red by about ninety-five thousand. I think on the next slide I included it, yes. Uh, I kind of, this is the same thing, uh, that we saw at the previous budget workshop, where I kind of estimated out, uh, for the following three years with a six point five percent rate increase for each of those three years, and expenses increasing at approximately CPI three percent. You can see that the net revenues start to get closer back to, uh, being balanced. Uh, the, the positive thing about sanitation fund is they have, uh, healthy reserves. Uh, this year we estimated to have about twenty-six percent at the end of the year. We're projecting to have about almost twenty-two percent, uh, well, twenty-six percent next year, twenty-two percent the following year, and then twenty-one percent the year after. So we're still above the, uh, recommended minimum fund balance for the sanitation fund, so. Again, there's the information on rate increases and estimated expenditures. General fund, uh, made a couple of changes in the general fund. Uh, we removed funding for a vacant, uh, permit clerk position in the planning and zoning department. That was the employee that moved to the utility fund. We changed the Parks and Recreation Program Coordinator position from part-time to full-time. We discussed this at the last budget workshop, and, uh, I had to remove one of the two full-time labor positions that we had added in, into the Parks and Rec Department, uh, to make that change possible. So, uh, we do have a full-time, uh, Parks and Recreation Program Coordinator position in the budget, and one additional, uh, laborer that we, we do, we do not have at the moment, so. In order to kind of make everything work and balance the general fund budget, uh, we made a couple of changes. We decreased, uh, the programs budget, uh, within the Parks and Rec Department from fifty thousand to forty thousand. Uh, we decreased riverfront maintenance from fifty-three thousand five hundred to forty-three five. Um, I believe the vast majority of that was for the, uh, gazebo, gazebo, uh, was it the gazebo? Not the gazebo. It's the walkway, boardwalk underneath the bridge and the dock.
The gazebo dock.
Gazebo dock. Okay, thought it was the gazebo dock. So we reduced that a little bit, and, um, Jonathan's hopeful we'll find, uh, a little bit of funding elsewhere to help with that maintenance, but. Uh, general fund revenues and expenditures, um, you can see that, uh, next year's budget, we are balanced with a positive balance of about twenty-nine hundred dollars. The reserves remaining, um, well, going up by that amount next year. However, the, uh, percentage of that, uh, is decreasing. We're estimating this year, uh, at the end of September to be about fourteen and a half percent, uh, but next budget year, uh, that'd be about thirteen point eight percent because operating expenditures are going up. So, uh, when your operating expenditures go up and your reserves don't go up, your percentage goes down a little bit, so.
And that's, um, that's one of the areas of concern. I, I think we have to make a conscious effort to get our reserves where they need to be. It's, I think it's fine to increase certain positions that are in place. I understand that we're doing a lot of realignment at this point, just to kind of get the key people into their positions, but we've got to consciously make sure that our reserves are where they need to be. And I think we were trending up a- as of last year significantly. But if we need to run lean in certain positions, we need to do that to make sure that we are prepared for anything that may come that's unforeseen.
Well, that's, that's something that I haven't really mentioned, you know, when we do the budget and I estimate for these positions, it's not like, you know, we've, we've added in these positions, but these, these employees are not going to come on October one, so there's going to be some cost savings there, and as we go through the year, that's something that we can take a look at. I'm going to, uh, start bringing a, probably a quarterly report to the commission, um, now that I've got an extra person back upstairs to kind of help with some stuff. That, um, gonna get back on, um, doing those quarterly reports to the commission, so you can see kind of how we're trending against budget, so. Typically, um, as you can see, for example, this year, we budgeted to have, to put about forty-three thousand into reserves. We're estimating to put about a hundred and twenty-seven thousand, so. We did, you know, considerably, considerably better than what we budgeted for. So we're hopeful that, you know, that, again, this is plan for the worst, hope for the best, and I'm confident that we'll see a much larger number than that, than going into reserves, so. Better Place Fund, um, made a couple of changes, uh, when we went through final review. Uh, I had the seventy-five thousand in for the, uh, Riverfront Park, um, but I did not have the revenue in. I did not have the fifty thousand for the Firdap, and we have Firdap here as well, so I added in the fifty thousand dollars for the Firdap and the Riverfront Playground. Also added in the twenty thousand dollars from the Rotary Club of Palaca that they're going to contribute for the Riverfront Play- Playground, so that helped, uh, the Better Place Fund look a little bit better. Um, the transfer from downtown Tiff for the CDBG project, we kind of discussed that last Thursday, that that's coming out of, out of the Tiff, so I added it in to the Better Place, and then on the expense side, I increased the expenditure for that project, and, um, Jonathan is going to try to make that number work. He's gonna have to, have to pull a rabbit out of his hat, I think, so.
Could be the first time.
Yeah. Yeah, so, uh, budget-wise, you can see that the net revenues, uh, expenditures of the Better Place Fund is a little bit in the red, um, which is, is not necessarily a bad thing. You can see the reserves, we're hoping that, uh, the reserves in that fund will be, at the end of next year, about a hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars. Right now, with the way grant projects work and, and, uh, reimbursement status, we have to spend the money and then we have to wait on reimbursement. So even though it shows that number on paper, that's not necessarily where it's at at this point in time, so it's, it's one of those where it's, it's kind of a, a cash, cash flow exercise when it comes to the Better Place Fund. So, uh, on paper, if everything is settled out, all grant reimbursements are received by the end of next September, we should have that amount in, in Better Place Fund. So that will allow us to look at doing some additional capital projects. Tiff funds, made a lot of changes, um, from last night, uh, last Thursday night's workshop. As we discussed at the CRA workshop, I added in, uh, this is just downtown Tiff, I added in, uh, sixty-two thousand two twenty-nine for the downtown's chair of CRA Administrator, and in order to make all of that fit, here are the changes that we made. Uh, we reduced landscaping from twenty thousand to fifteen thousand, reduced site amenities from thirty-five to twenty-five, reduced redevelopment incentives from fifty thousand to forty thousand, reduced the home improvement program from forty thousand to thirty thousand. As a, as a part of making that change and not transferring, uh, a portion of a, a current employee's, uh, salary to the general fund, uh, we reduced the administrative expense from, uh, what it was, twenty-three, four, thirty-five, down to seven thousand, three ninety-one, and that's just based on the formula we discussed last Thursday. I also had to reduce the transfer for the CDBG project from a hundred and sixty-eight thousand to approximately a hundred and fifty-six thousand. So, those are all of the changes and, and the decreases in those line items that we had to make, uh, in order to get that to fit. For South Historic, added twenty-one, three sixty-four for CRA admin, uh, and basically reduced their, uh, money that they were setting aside for future CDBG infrastructure projects from two hundred thousand to one hundred and eighty-four thousand, and of course, as part of that, the administrative expenses went down a little bit. Uh, North Historic, did the same thing, added their share, which is approximately ten thousand for the CRA admin, and then decreased their money that they were setting aside for that future CDBG project, a hundred and fifty-five thousand to about a hundred and forty-seven thousand. So, that's it. That's all I really have, not, not a whole lot of changes, the Tiff being the majority of the changes. So, um, all of those changes were in the large budget document that should have been included. If anybody has any questions, I would be happy to.
Did we take a look at our buildings to make sure that we got enough funds so it's not the maintenance?
Yes, that's, that's something that Jonathan did in regards to all of the different departments that he takes a look at. We did include, um, some estimated debt service for a new public works, uh, building. I believe we estimated a four thousand square foot building, um, about four hundred thousand, about a hundred dol- a hundred dollars a square foot. So, um, we did estimate for that. Down here at City Hall, we included, uh, I believe it was an extra approximately thirty thousand to make some upgrades here to City Hall, and then, like I said, all of the other departments. Uh, I know that that was a, a major concern of, of Jonathan's, as well as Mr. Suggs and I, and, and the maintenance is trending upwards to making, make sure that we do have enough funds.
Any other questions?
I know, I know, the city is pretty well disposed in terms of the number of buildings that we got, and the number of people that we have, um, each of the buildings. I like the, the requests, and costs as it relates to operating each one of the units, and see how we can make a, make it be more efficient and effective from a cost-effective standpoint. Extra building, we got something in the building, we have enough people in any of them, so per square foot, we have to look at what we can do to improve that, so.
That thought has crossed our mind more than once.
That was a conversation just that. So seeing none, um, it's triggers, can you read the caption for a resolution for item A?
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Palaca, Putnam County, Florida, adopting a tentative levying of admin law on taxes for the City of Palaca, Putnam County, for fiscal year two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, and providing for an effective date, whereas the City Commission of the City of Palaca, Putnam County, Florida, on July twenty-eighth, two thousand sixteen, adopted fiscal year two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, tentative millet rates following the public hearing as required by Florida statute two zero zero point zero six five, and, whereas the City Commission of the City of Palaca, Putnam County, Florida, held a public hearing as required by Florida statute two zero zero point zero six five, and, whereas the gross taxable value for operating purposes not exempt from taxation within the City of Palaca, Putnam County, has been certified by the property appraiser to the City of Palaca as three hundred and ninety-three million, six hundred and twenty-three thousand, nine hundred and seventy-two dollars. Now therefore, the fee resolved by the City Commission of the City of Palaca, Putnam County, Florida, that the fiscal year two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, operating millet rate for the City of Palaca is six point four zero 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 mils, tentatively, which is less than the rollback rate of six point eight zero zero nine mils by five point eight nine percent. This resolution shall take effect immediately upon its adoption, passed and adopted by the City Commission of the City of Palaca, this April September two thousand sixteen.
Motion on the floor and a second. We're now open the floor for public hearing. Is there anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close public hearing. Is any further discussion? Questions been called. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Item B, resolution adopted and proposed fiscal year twenty sixteen seventeen budget.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Palaca, Putnam County, Florida, adopting the tentative budget for fiscal year two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
There's a motion on the floor and a second. We're now open the floor for public hearing. Is there anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close public hearing. Any further discussion? Questions called. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, Mr. Reynolds and Sir Suggs. Moving on to item six of the agenda, public hearing for thirty-eight twenty-nine Reed Street, Planning Board Recommendation to Annex and Assign Intensive Commercial Land Use and Zoning to the Property. Julio Pena, owner, Palaca Building and Zoning applicant. Mr. Crowe. Item A is Annexation Ordinance, second reading.
An ordinance of the City of Palaca, Florida, annexing into the corporate limits of the City of Palaca, Florida, certain adjacent territory identified as thirty-eight twenty-nine Reed Street, location located in section two, Township ten south, range twenty-six east. Public records of Putnam County, Florida, contiguous to the boundaries of the City of Palaca, and providing effective date.
Motion on the floor, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Campbell. We're now open the floor for public hearing. Is there anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close public hearing. Questions called. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Item B, Future Land Use Map Amendment.
An ordinance of the City of Palaca, Florida, providing that the future land use map of the adopted comprehensive plan be amended with respect to the following parcel of land, less than ten acres in size, from Putnam County, U.S., Urban Services to C O M Commercial, for thirty-eight twenty-nine Reed Street, property located in section two, Township ten south, range twenty-six east, providing for severability and providing an effective date.
There's a motion on the floor and a second. We're now open the floor for public hearings. Is there anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close public hearing. Any discussion? Questions called. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Item C, Res zoning ordinance, second reading.
An ordinance of the City of Palaca, Florida, providing that the official zoning map of the City of Palaca, Florida, be amended from Putnam County C two, Commercial, General Life, to City C two, Intensive Commercial, for a parcel identified as thirty-eight twenty-nine Reed Street, located in section two, Township ten south, range twenty-six east, providing for severability and providing an effective date.
There's a motion on the floor and a second. Is there anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close public hearing. Any discussion? Questions called. All in favor, say aye. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Got silence in here. Moving on to item seven of the agenda. Public hearing, seven thousand old Wolf Bay Road, Planning Board Recommendation to Annex and Assign Neighborhood Commercial Zoning Land Use and Zoning to Property. Mockingbird Properties, owners, Palaca Building and Zoning applicant. Item A, Annexation Ordinance, second reading.
An ordinance of the City of Palaca, Florida, annexing into the corporate limits of the City of Palaca, Florida, certain adjacent territory identified as seven thousand old Wolf Bay Road, located in section nine, Township ten south, range twenty-six east. Public records of Putnam County, Florida, contiguous to the boundaries of the City of Palaca, and providing an effective date.
There's a motion on the floor and a second by Commissioner Moore. We're now open the floor for public hearing. Is there anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close public hearing. Questions called. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Item B, Future Land Use Amendment Ordinance.
An ordinance of the City of Palaca, Florida, providing that the future land use map of the adopted comprehensive plan be amended with respect to the following parcel of land, less than ten acres in size, from Putnam County, U.S., Urban Services to C O M Commercial, for seven thousand old Wolf Bay Road, property located in section nine, Township ten south, range twenty-six east, providing for severability and providing an effective date.
There's a motion on the floor and a second. Is there anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close public hearing. Any discussion? Questions called. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Item C, Res zoning ordinance.
An ordinance of the City of Palaca, Florida, providing that the official zoning map of the City of Palaca, Florida, be amended from Putnam County A G Agriculture, to City C one A Neighborhood Commercial, for a parcel identified as seven thousand old Wolf Bay Road, located in section nine, Township ten south, range twenty-six east, providing for severability and providing an effective date.
There's a motion on the floor and a second. We're now open the floor for public hearing. Is there anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close public hearing. Any discussion? Questions called. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item eight of the agenda. Public hearing, three hundred north nineteen, State Road nineteen, Planning Board Recommendation to Annex and Assign Intensive Commercial and Single Family Residential Land Use and Zoning to the property. Clay Electric Cooperative Incorporated owner, Palaca Building and Zoning applicant. Item A, Annexation Ordinance, second reading.
An ordinance of the City of Palaca, Florida, annexing into the corporate limits of the City of Palaca, Florida, certain adjacent territory identified as three hundred north State Road nineteen, located in section two, Township ten south, range twenty-six east. Public records of Putnam County, Florida, contiguous to the boundaries of the City of Palaca, and providing an effective date.
There's a motion on the floor and a second. Open the floor for public hearing. Is there anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one, public hearing is closed. Questions called. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Item B, Future Land Use Amendment Ordinance Number One.
An ordinance of the City of Palaca, Florida, providing that the future land use map of the adopted comprehensive plan be amended with respect to the following parcel of land, less than ten acres in size, land. Be amended, the next one.
Three hundred north State Road nineteen.
Be amended with respect to the following parcel of land, less than ten acres in size, three hundred north State Road nineteen, from Putnam County, U.S., Urban Services to C O M Commercial, located in section two, Township ten south, range twenty-six east, providing for severability and providing an effective date.
There's a motion on the floor, uh, second by Vice Mayor Brown. We're now open the floor for public hearing. Is there anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close public hearing. Any discussion? Questions called. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Item C, Future Land Use Amendment Ordinance Number Two.
An ordinance of the City of Palaca, Florida, providing that the future land use map of the adopted comprehensive plan be adopted with, with respect to the following parcel of land, less than ten acres in size, land from Stillwell Avenue and line between one ten and two hundred Stillwell Avenue, from Putnam County, U.S., Urban Services to Residential Low, R L, property located in section two, Township ten south, range twenty-six east, providing for severability and providing an effective date.
There's a motion on the floor and a second. We're now open the floor for public hearing. Is there anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close public hearing. Any discussion? Questions called. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item D, Res zoning ordinance number one.
An ordinance of the City of Palaca, Florida, providing that the official zoning map of the City of Palaca, Florida, be amended from Putnam County, U.S., Industrial Life and C two Commercial, General Life, to City C two Intensive Commercial, for a parcel identified as three hundred north State Road nineteen, located in section two, Township ten south, range twenty-six east, providing for severability and providing an effective date.
There's a motion on the floor and a second. We're now open the floor for public hearing. Is there anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close public hearing. Any discussion? Questions called twice. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Item E, rezoning ordinance number two.
An ordinance of the City of Palatka, Florida, providing that the official zoning map of the City of Palatka, Florida, be amended from Putnam County I.L. Industrial Light to City R-one A, Single Family Residential, the land fronting Stillwell Avenue in line between one-ten and two-hundred Stillwell Avenue, located in section two, Township ten south, range twenty-six east, providing for severability and providing an effective date.
There's a motion on the floor in a second by Commissioner Campbell. We're now open the floor for public hearing. Is there anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close public hearing. Is there any discussion? Questions called. All in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item number nine of the agenda. Ordinance amending chapter forty-two, article three of the Code of Ordinances, Burglar Panic, Durress, Alarms, to comply with the Florida H.B. five, House Bill five thirty-five, second reading.
An ordinance of the City of Palatka, Florida, amending Palatka Code of Ordinances, chapter forty-two, article three, Burglar Panic, Panic, Durress, Alarms, to revise section forty-two dash seventy-nine, Use of Licensed Contractors, and section forty-two dash ninety, Alarm System Fees and Fine Schedule, to comply with provisions of House Bill five thirty-five, Governing Alarm System Registrations, providing for severability and providing an effective date.
There's a motion on the floor in a second. We're now open the floor for public hearing. Is there anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close public hearing. Any discussion? Questions called. All in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item number ten, ordinance, rezoning, Quill-o-seven Washington Street, Historic Central Academy, Planning Board Recommendation to Rezone Property from R-two to Family Residential to PBG-one, Public Buildings and Grounds. Palatka Housing Authority Owner applicant, first reading.
An ordinance of the City of Palatka, Florida, providing that the official zoning map of the City of Palatka, Florida, be amended from Agriculture to PBG-one, Public Buildings and Grounds, for a parcel identified as Quill-o-seven Washington Street, located in section forty-two, Township ten south, range twenty-seven east, providing for severability and providing an effective date.
There's a motion on the floor in a second. We're now open the floor for public hearing. Is there anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one here for public hearing, we'll close the public hearing. Questions been called. All in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Item number eleven on the agenda. Ordinance amending Palatka Municipal Code, section twenty dash one-eight-five subsection B, to amend the membership and terms of the Palatka General Employees Pension Board. First reading.
An ordinance of the City of Palatka, Florida, revising Code of Ordinances of the City of Palatka, Florida, by amending chapter two, division four, City of Palatka General Employees Pension Plan, sections two dash one-eight-five B, to revise the membership of the Board of Trustees, and section two dash one-eight-five C, to revise the term of trustees, providing for severability and providing an effective date.
Is there a motion? There's a motion in a second on the floor. We're now open the floor for public hearing. Is there anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close public hearing. Any further discussion? Questions been called. All in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Y'all stick with me, we're almost there. Item number twelve, ordinance amending chapter two, vision six of the Code of Ordinances, Firefighter Pension Plan to Revise Vesting and Normal Retirement Conditions Effective Retroactive to one-one twenty-sixteen, first reading.
An ordinance of the City of Palatka, Florida, revising chapter two, division six of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Palatka, Florida, entitled Firefighter Retirement Plan, by amending section two dash two thirty-six, Non-Inconvenient Military Service, Credited Service, amending section two dash two thirty-eight, Normal Retirement Conditions, amending section two dash two thirty-nine, Vesting Termination of Membership, amending section two dash two forty-seven, Active Member Survivor Benefits, Conditions for Automatic Pension to Spouse, amending section two dash two fifty point fifteen, Member Contributions, Refunds, Appealing All Ordinances in Conflict, Providing Authority to Codify and Providing an Effective Date.
There's a motion on the floor in a second. We're now open the floor for public hearing. Is there anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close public hearing. Is there any further discussion? Questions called. All in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item thirteen. An ordinance amending appendix A, Fee Schedule of the Code of Ordinances to Increase Water and Sewer Rates, fiscal year twenty sixteen seventeen budget year, first reading.
An ordinance of the City of Palatka, Florida, amending appendix A, Fee Schedule of the Municipal Code of the City of Palatka as it pertains to fees and other charges relating to water rates generally, both inside and outside the city limits, sewer rates generally, both inside and outside the city limits, providing for severability and providing an effective date of October one, two thousand sixteen.
There's a motion on the floor in a second. Is there anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one here for public hearing, we'll close public hearing. Any further discussion?
Yes, I'd like to, I'd like to let folks know that I hear some people ask about our increase and the increase for residential, we three dollars and four cents a month and for commercials with two pickups. With five pickups, five dollars and eighty, eighty-six cents, and commercial pickups for six days, six dollars and thirty-nine cents. And it's something that we voted on every year, not just for more than one year. It comes up every year for our approval. Those were questions that were asked of me in the last couple of days and I wanted to give that feedback to our residents.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Questions been called. All in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item fourteen of the agenda. An ordinance amending Palatka Municipal Code, chapter ninety-four, Zoning Code to Define and Regulate Electronic Gaming Establishments, first reading.
An ordinance of the City of Palatka, Florida, amending the zoning code, chapter ninety-four, the municipal code, to define and regulate electronic gaming establishments, providing for severability and providing an effective date.
Is there a motion on the floor? There's a motion on the floor, very loudly, by Commissioner Borah. It's a second by Commissioner Campbell. We're now open the floor for public hearing. Is there anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close public hearing. Is there any further discussion? Question is called by Commissioner Borah. All in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item fifteen on the agenda, administrative reports. Mr. Crowe, do you have anything for us today?
Mr. I don't, thank you.
You pick up the bulk of the agenda. Mr. Griffith?
I apologize for not getting project status updated out this week. We're trying to get one out tomorrow with everything that happened with the storm. It just got biased. If you want a specific update regarding a project or initiative, I can provide that now.
You want to send that back to electronic, right?
Yes, sir.
Blame it on the rain. Ms. Tucker? Do you have anything?
I can give you a brief update on things that have been going on at the center. We have got field trips pretty much booked up solid through November at the center. The occupation of Palatka is happening at the Bronson House in two weeks. Right now, I've got elementary schools fighting over slots. I have to see how many kids we can accommodate. This is the first time we've ever said, can we handle everyone that wants to come? So, it's exciting. Things are going well.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. May I, I'm sitting. She's kind of in charge of most of our buildings and I talked with the city manager about it. And we've gone out to talk to people as we're running for election, they have questions. And some of them wanted to see our buildings open more and I was gonna ask to see if we had some senior citizens who would volunteer to give some of their time to help you do something. And I'm saying it now so people can, can hear you and if you tell them how to get in touch with you because I know some folks don't have anything to do and they're sitting around home, they could be...
Exactly. Anyone who is interested in volunteering at any of our facilities can either call the River Center at three-eight-six, three-two-six, two-seven-zero-four. They can come in anytime between the hours of ten-thirty and four, Tuesday through Friday. If I'm not there, one of my fabulous current volunteers can explain it all to them, probably better than I can. They can also email me at M.Tucker, T-U-C-K-E-R, at palatka-fl.gov. I, I do, I do. There's a, there's an application form they fill out. We sit down and talk. There's an interview before there's, you know, no one has any keys or security codes before they would be properly screened and vetted.
Mr. Borah, make sure, we did that background check. Chief, just in time.
I'm waiting for Mr. Brown to refer to Morrison Mall to provide there.
Chief Lambert.
This is fifteenth anniversary of nine eleven.
Come on, hold on, come on up.
There are a couple ceremonies coming up tomorrow morning. It kicks off with a pre-rit walk, starting at Johnson Overture Funeral Home at about eight-fifteen. There's gonna be a quick ceremony and then a short walk. And then on Sunday, September eleventh, Patriot Day of Service and Recognition and solemn Day of Prayer and Unity at the Government Complex at twenty-five oh nine Curl Avenue. That starts at nine, it'll probably be an hour or so.
Thank you, sir. Stew? Before we, we've got one, got one new person, Ms. Robinson. You come forward and introduce yourself. The newest addition to the City of Palatka.
My name is Deborah Robinson. I am the new H.R. Generalist for the City of Palatka. I deal with those home improvement, thirteen years operations and administrative manager. I had my feet to the fire since I've been here, since day one, and I've only been here two weeks. So, I look forward to working with anyone who has any questions, concerns. You can contact me here at the office. It's three-eight-six, three-two-nine, oh-one-hundred, extension two-one-eight. Or you can catch me on my email, that's D. Robinson, R-O-B-I-N, S-O-N, at palatka-fl. Oh, F-L, sorry. Thank you.
Nine positions. She's doing a fantastic job. She's really has taken reins and she's done a great job. She's actually exceeded my expectations for someone that has just been here for two weeks because she's got a vast knowledge and a great skill set and we're lucky to have her.
Before we get to the city manager's report, we've got one item that we want to consider as an emergency item and that pertains to the golf course contract. And we need a vote to take, to add this item to the agenda's emergency item. We have a motion to add this item to the agenda's emergency item. There's a, there's a motion in a second on the floor. All in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Mr. Suggs?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate that. Yes, sir. Just wanted to bring this item to you folks tonight. As you know, we went out for a bid a few months back and we've actually awarded a, ranked the bids and we've actually got a number one candidate and we're currently working through a lot of the issues of putting together a lease slash management agreement. Unfortunately, it's, it's taken a little longer than what we had planned and as you know, the contract, the current management contract expires September thirtieth. Mr. Holmes and I have met with Mr. Hertz, who, by the way, is your number one candidate moving forward, to discuss the possibility of entering into a temporary management agreement as of October one for a period of about three months. We think it'd be a good opportunity for us to go ahead and do that and bring it to you folks with some type of draft language at your next city commission meeting to, to approve. It gives us an opportunity to take our time and get through the negotiations and the hurdles that we're dealing with on the golf management contract. And so that's why we're asking for this tonight. So we'll bring it back to you in a couple of weeks with a draft agreement.
Mr. Holmes, any comments?
No, I'm, I'm totally supportive of that and there are some things that were beyond the control of anybody here. One of those being your grant under which we, we built the restaurant facility required us to determine a fair market rental basis, which is based upon appraisals which we don't have yet. It was impossible to come up with that number to enter into a lease agreement with Mr. Hertz, but to believe that can be done in the next thirty days. So, there's a reason for this, not just, we're not just kicking the ball down the, down the alley as Mr. Mayor Hill can. Can down the, down the alley as the mayor is fond of talking about, but there are some issues that we had to work through.
Any question? Yes, sir.
So we accept the, we approve the city manager's recommendation for the three months negotiation, the established contract, Mr. Hertz. Until, until they can come up with a permanent contract and bring the votes to the commission.
I have a question with regards to that. Are you saying three months? So do we need to specify three months? Or do we need to leave it until it is fulfilled? Because if it doesn't happen in three months, will it come back to the commission or...
It would come back.
It would come back, yeah.
And so, do we, the other question is, do we need parameters as far as cost? There you go. Do we need parameters as far as what the, what the monthly fee would be? Not, would it be not to exceed what the current rates are per month?
I believe that would be a fair assessment.
Oh, we're gonna bring them back to the management contract for specific approval?
But they're looking for, for some type of boundaries. We can, we'll keep it within the boundaries and the confines of...
For three months.
For those three months. And we'll, you know, we'll work with Mr. Hertz and we'll bring back something that's agreeable to everybody. That will be beneficial, not only to the city, but also to Mr. Hertz for taking on this, this added duty and responsibility.
Any further discussion? Questions called. All in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Continuing, continuing on with our reports. Mr. Holmes, do you have a report?
Nope.
Ms. Drigger, do you have a report?
I'm just gonna remind everybody, the Northeast Forum League of Cities Dinner Meeting is next Thursday night, so please let me know if you're gonna be there and if you're gonna have a guest.
Can you speak up, can you speak up a little louder so that everybody can hear you in TV land?
Oh, yes, I can speak as loud as you like.
Even though you're recording.
The Northeast Forum League of Cities Dinner Meeting is next week. The city is hosting. We host every September and so I'm asking for RSVPs on reservations from the commission. And please let me know if you have a guest. And that's for the name badges.
We don't think you have anything else. Budget time is over. Mr. Suggs?
Yes, sir. Well, we, we've already handled one, which was the introduction of Ms. Debbie Robinson. Again, welcome aboard. Debbie, it's gonna be great working with you. Also, just wanna touch a little bit about the storm prep that went in place. We were very, very fortunate here in the City of Palatka that we didn't have the damage that other folks did. Folks just right up the road from us had quite a bit of damage. But again, kudos to Paul Works right to Jonathan Griffith, Chief Shaw and Chief Lambert for putting that incident command in place and making sure that we're all good and safe and the roads were traversable and everything was taken care of for what little bit of damage we did have. Thank you all so much for making sure that happened. And just, just a little another housekeeping. Thank you to each one of you commissioners and for Mr. Holmes for all of his guidance, for Mr. Reynolds and all our department heads out there that made this budget cycle again. I hate to use this word painless, but it really was. It was a true coming together again of what it is we're trying to accomplish, one vision and we're moving forward. And again, it was a great opportunity to sit down and get that hammered out. So thank you again to the commissioners as well as staff. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Suggs. Before we move into commissioner responses, a couple, got a couple different housekeeping things to take care of. First of all, I wanna make sure I recognize our Rock Fellowship kids. As usual, we've got, we're, we're gonna recognize you every time we see you because there's never too much praise that we can give our young people. And also, Ms. Stephanie Weller is, is here. She is the, she is the, she is the true, she's the epitome of what, what Rock, what these Rock kids are and, and she has done a great job with them and we wanna thank you for all your hard work. Additionally, we have the Putnam County Chamber of Commerce's annual fundraiser Saturday... Additionally, we have the Putnam County Chamber of Commerce's annual fundraiser Saturday, September seventeenth, two thousand sixteen, from six P.M. until, at the Putnam County Fairgrounds and Expo Center. It's a roast with pork oysters, live auctions, low country boil, and it features the great Terry Turner. And so, um, it's something that if you haven't seen it, you may wanna see it. So it's always a great event and it, and it works out very well for us. We are, um, we're looking to, we're looking to get a table for the ci, it's anyone. We should get, are we getting a table for the city this year? Okay. Seventy-five dollars. Seventy-five dollars for the ticket. Tables are five fifty for eight people. So, aside from that, we will now move into commissioners' reports. Commissioner Norwood. Sure.
I'm absolutely sure.
I'm gonna try my luck on the other side of the room. Vice Mayor Brown.
I'm gonna take a few minutes.
She need to go last.
You're gonna last. We need to make that last. Mr. Campbell.
Yes, I just have two things. Again, I would like to thank the Redeem Gardens for what they have done. It came as a complete surprise to all of us. Um, and we are eternally grateful for, um, what you all have done for us. Um, also, I wanna praise the Rock. Um, I was getting phone calls and text messages, making sure that when we were on our off month, they were kinda thrown off and they were trying to make it like, what's going on? We had, they, we hadn't had any meetings. So I just, that really makes, you know, me smile knowing that we have young people that are invested in what we do here, um, as city commissioners. So, um, again, thank you for all that you, um, do. Um, also, the information that Vice Mayor gave about the rate increase, I would like to see that placed on the website, as well as have a printed out copy that those that come up and pay bills will be able to take home. Um, let's make sure that we get this information out. We don't want to say that we had an increase and we didn't use as many methods to get it out as possible. And even if the newspaper would be so kind enough, um, to get that information out to the citizens' radio stations, I think that'll be one of the main things to let them know. We're trying to be as transparent as possible, um, with increases as they enrate, I mean, as they increase. Um, so that's it for me.
Sure.
I can come, no, I'm just playing. That's it.
Commissioner Borum.
And on the communication side, I, we also could add that on the, um, the bill, the warrant bills too, right? You couldn't put that on there?
There's not enough room on the first part of format.
Okay.
However, we're still working towards combining with the gas authority when we have it. When we go to that, full-size letter bill, there'll be plenty of room to do messages like that.
Well, other than that, I'd like to yield the rest of my time to Vice Mayor Brown.
No, I don't yield it.
You don't give me but a minute and a half. Nope, y'all give me a minute and a half. I'm, I'm more than that.
You gotta practice now.
No, not tonight.
Vice Mayor Brown.
Free man.
Look, and you can sit there if you want to, darling, tonight. Um, you know, we have, over a period of time, heard so many negative things going on in our country with our police and killings and all the things that, that happened that have been bad. And we sit here and complain about them, but we need to be part of the solution to this problem. And so I came up with an idea with my police chief that we wanted to do something about it. And so we have started on a journey and I wanna challenge after you all here just at home and here, challenge any of you to do what we did the other night. Last Thursday, after we left C.R.A. meeting, I rushed home and it was storm. And I said, oh goodness. I had gone to the chief and asked him to bring some of his police officers to my house to meet with my neighbors. I took a three radiant block, walked it, took a flyer to them and asked, would they come to my house? I always take snacks, 'cause I always feed everybody a little bit. Um, I got home and I was, as I walked in my room, I heard the noise in my, in my kitchen going on. And I was very happy to find that our police chief and his, uh, police officers had come in and he had, had eight of them to come with him to, to the house. And what we did and what we want to do is get a good, um, rapport with our police department. People need to understand that they have families and they work with, and they want to be part of, they are part of the community. And just because we see that blue suit and hear that siren go off, it's not because they're, they're to do something for, uh, to us, but they keep us safe. And so we had, uh, twenty-four people that came out of the neighborhood, with the police officers out of the neighborhood. And I think we stayed there about two hours, 'cause we started around six. Um, chief came, uh, in and he let, I'll let him tell you what he did. But after they finished, I asked for everybody who sat in that room to have a comment. And everybody who sat in that room had something to say to those police officers. Uh, we kinda gave hot dogs to break the, uh.
Donuts.
No, no, hot dogs. We had hot dogs. But what happens, y'all don't know, for the last thirty-some years, I always baked for all my departments so they get something sweet. So, we wind up not being in my family room, but being in my kitchen and my dining room, 'cause that's where everybody kinda gathered to eat. But we had a very meaningful meeting. People went out and afterwards I, I talked with those folks that had come and they were so happy. They had been there and could talk to police one-on-one. My, uh, oldest son Teddy brought three of his basketball players. And we had a cross-section in age and gender and we had a really nice, uh, uh, meeting. I'm gonna let, uh, our chief tell you about it.
You haven't been recognized yet.
May I?
Yes, sir. You got a gun on.
I was very proud when, um, Mayor, I'm sorry, Ms. Brown approached us with this opportunity to be able to speak to the community, members of, of, of her neighborhood, uh, surrounding residents, and business owners. Part of our plan is to be able to bridge the gap with the community and one of those things is being able to communicate. Communication is the key. So opening up, uh, that, that evening, uh, opening up her house for that evening, inviting everybody in, it was a neutral place and the officers came in, citizens came in. It allowed us to not only introduce ourselves so they can get to know the officers as people, but, uh, for the citizens to introduce themselves. It also allowed for some communication back and forth, uh, open dialogue and some understanding. We, we answered questions and we explained different things that we do at the police department. Uh, that, that's what our goal is. We invite, uh, the opportunity to be able to come in on any ground, definitely to be able to explain, uh, what we like to do within the community. We wanna be able to get out in the community and, uh, touch people on, on different levels. And that was something that was very good for us. We enjoyed it. Uh, every officer there, we had officers from every, uh, part of the police department, whether it be administration all the way down to our, our rookie officer. Uh, so, and everybody got to see, uh, a part of the police department there and the police department and the officers got to see a part of the community on a positive level. And that's the important side. We meet people all the time on a negative level, but we got to see people on a positive level. So I thank you, Ms. Brown, for inviting us in. It's our pleasure.
We had one lady even start a prayer for the police officer. She broke down and cried. I had to pat her on the back and settle her. But I, I brought a picture of the group being there. I want you all to take that back in your minds. I, I want to challenge those people who see us on TV or people who read the news to do the same thing with this community. We have one of the best communities in the world and we have a dynamite police department. These gentlemen are courteous and they, and they're kind to us and they do their job. And people need to know them on a one-to-one basis. So I'm, um, asking and challenging the city of Palatka, if you will only take two or three blocks and invite some of your neighbors who you feel safe with, come into your home and meet with these police officers. If you call the police station, I'm sure chief will have somebody in charge of having somebody get there. I wanna tell you, I think most of you guys were off-duty, right?
That's correct.
And, and they came of their own free will to, to do that. And to get eight of them to come to my house to meet with other citizens, I think is a wonderful thing. I wanna commend our police department and our chief on how they were trying to do for the community.
Vice Mayor, I think outside of commending chief on that, I think we need to commend you for stepping outside of, for thinking outside of the box and, and creating an initiative which allows us to do something different in our community. All too many times we see people react to things that happen in the community. But what I've seen in this community is proactive relationships being built by the police department as it relates to events, um, by the commission in relation. And I, I can tell you, that idea is great and it, and it, it needs to be adopted throughout the community and we definitely commend you for that energy. Thirty-two years in, on the commission and you still have the energy and the zeal to go forward and bring new initiatives. And I, I think that's an awesome thing. You only have, okay, so in your next thirty seconds, do you have anything else? You got anything else?
Oh, I, we went to, we went to our state convention and I wanna tell you, I was really proud of, of our young men. All of us went, all of us participated. Everybody knows that we are here and they are on committees that will be giving information and helping to make the whole state work better because it's a statewide organization. It has four hundred and twelve cities in it.
So, um, is that it?
That's it, sure.
Need more time?
All right.
While we, while we're, while we're singing Vice Mayor Brown's praises, I, I think that the city, um, needs to know this. This is a very, uh, at the Florida League of Cities Conference, a lot of great things that happened. Um, everybody that sits up, sits up here has been, uh, an active person, an active participant with the Florida League of Cities and committees. And I, I think that that's important, to know that your commissioners are building relationships outside the community and they're, they're sitting on the five policymaking committees and they're making major decisions. But the highlight for us was Vice Mayor Brown, who has been on the executive board for the Florida League of Cities for many, many years, approximately fifteen years. And, um, this particular year, she didn't get the nomination from Northeast Florida League of Cities, but she ran from the floor. And she ran from the floor, Commissioner Borum was part of the nominating committee. And when she ran from the floor, it, you need a second from someone there. She knows everybody in the Florida League of Cities. And so she gets a second from the floor. This is the first time in the history of the Florida League of Cities that someone has run from the floor against someone who was recommended by their board and has won. And so Commissioner Brown comes back and she's again elected by her peers to the Florida League of Cities Executive Board. And her comments that really kinda resonated were the fact that she talked about the need for there to be representation in rural communities and how she served for all those years and, and over a decade and a half of service to the executive board. She travels and she's only missed one meeting. And she continually is dedicated to it. She's continually dedicated to making sure that the Florida League of Cities is mindful of the, of the representation needed for small rural communities such as Palatka. And she's there and her peers by a res, by a, a, a super majority that's voted in her favor. And so it was the first time in the history of the Florida League of Cities that you have someone run from the floor and be elected to the executive board. And so again, congratulations to you, Vice Mayor. Job well done. I, um, my, and my closing comments won't be very long today, but I'm always excited to see staff that doesn't have to be here come to these meetings. And I see a few guys out there in the audience. Can you just, if you can, just wave your hands? Because I, I think it's always important that when we have people who work for the city, who are, who come. It's always important to see. We see these faces all the time, but it's important, it's important that you don't make a robbery, to come out and to know what's going on in the community. And we appreciate you guys. I, we wanna make sure that we let you know that. We appreciate you and we appreciate you taking time out of your schedule just to sit down here with us. And so with that being said, we are in, um, prime season for our fishing tournaments. It's, the hour has been well spent and I'm not gonna talk much longer. But again, um, there've been a lot of things that have happened in this city. I wanna publicly commend Chief Shaw and the Palatka Police Department for the job well done on many issues, uh, particularly pertaining to the issues that we've gone through over the last couple of months. Um, I can tell you, we've got some of the finest officers in this community. We've got staff, uh, that's second to none. For those who don't know, I'm okay. And I'm okay. Um, but I can tell you, those guys in the back of the room, uh, Captain Forsythe, Chief Shaw, you guys did a great job. Uh, I've got an, I got an opportunity to really see firsthand, what strategic planning is in this community, um, as it relates to, uh, perceived crisis intervention from a law enforcement standpoint, as it related to the storm. Um, our emergency operations team, uh, did a great job. We were blessed not to be hit by those two storm systems that came through. If you were looking at, and Chief Lambert, we sat down on Saturday morning and if you looked at those, if you looked at that map and you could see those two storm systems running and the only thing in the middle was Palatka, you know, and, and God smiled on us. God smiled on us during those storms. You guys did a great job of preparing our community and we thank you for all that you do. With that being said.